We'll call to order the City of Douglasville City Council Legislative Work Session for this evening, which is Thursday, March the 2nd, 2023. We'll have our invocation by the Reverend Dr. Francisco Artley, Pastor of Poseyville United Methodist Church. After that, we'll have the Pledge Allegiance, which will be led by Mayor Pro Tem Terry Miller. Please stand for the invocation.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council. As we are starting Women's History Month, I just want to thank you, Madam Mayor, and the other councilwomen for your leadership and your service to our community, and that hopefully you'll be an example for other ladies to want to serve in public office. So, thank you. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, Lord, I just thank you for this beautiful day that you have given us, Lord. I thank you for our mayor and our council, Lord. I ask that you bless them, that you give them the wisdom, guidance, to do their duties. And, Lord, I just thank you for their service to our community. And I ask that you bless those that have come, and that you continue to bless our city, and just rain the Holy Spirit down upon those that are here in our city. And, Lord, thank you for everything you do for us. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic whose name is one nation under God, universal, the reason for this world.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, for leading us in the pledge. And thank you so much again, Pastor Artley, for coming this evening and being so thoughtful and kind and wishing the women that serve here in the City of Douglasville Happy Women's History Month. Thank you so much. God bless you. I'd like to welcome you to the Douglasville City Council Legislative Work Session. My name's Rochelle Robinson. I'm Mayor of the City of Douglasville. This is a work session where agenda items are presented for discussion only, and no official action will take place on the items tonight. The official action will be taken on the items discussed tonight, next Monday, at our voting meeting. If the business you're here for is not listed as an agenda item, there will be ample time under the agenda item, comments from citizens and delegate section, for you to discuss your business. I'll go over a few protocol issues, and then we will jump right into our meeting. I need please to make you aware, before we start, that we ask that you would listen closely, so there won't be any misunderstandings, and that you will keep your comments and presentations on a professional level, dealing with the facts that are important for this governing body to make our decisions. We will not accept comments that are considered by the chair to be of a personal attack on any individual or group of individuals. You will receive a warning from the chair. If you deviate from this requirement a second time, it will result in us asking you to, we'll discontinue the, turn the mic off so you won't keep talking. Only one person speaking at a time. Please do not applaud or react to the speaker. Speak from the audience. Cheer or carry on conversations in the audience when you're at the podium. We ask that you would please just direct your comments to the chairperson and listen to them, and we'll respond back and forth. I'll remind you that we're only required to accept public comments during the public hearing section. If you have a cellphone or electronic device, we ask that you would please put those in silent mode, or turn those off until after the meeting, so they will not be disruptive. Now, this is how the agenda will take place. There are agendas that are printed outside on the desk if you want a physical copy, and/or you can follow us on the screen that's printed. The committee chairperson will read the agenda item. Then that person representing that agenda item or applicant will make his or her presentation. Myself and councilmembers will possibly ask clarifying questions to help us make our decision, to deliberate that information and make our decision next Monday on your item. After that, the committee chairperson will ask for comments or statements from the audience. There is a maximum of 20 minutes for those in favor of the agenda item, and 20 is for those that are in opposition. And each person has five minutes, unless you have a big group, and then you split your time up. But in totality, you have 20 minutes for 20 minutes in opposition or this against the item. Prior to approaching the podium, we please ask that you would fill out one of the speaker cards that are outside on the table. You would put your name and address on that card and hand it to our city clerk, Ms. Vicki Acker, to my right. And when you come to the podium, again, give us your name and address for the record, so that we can know who you are, and that people that are viewing can see as well. Each person has one opportunity to speak. It's not a debate where we go back and forth and ask questions. We're just here to hear the information, deliberate again, and make our decision on next Monday. And please address all of your comments and concerns to the chairperson, unless a councilmember or myself asks you directly for a concern. If you have any printed material, please give that to our city clerk. She will make copies and disseminate those copies, distribute those to us, so that we'll have all that information. And so, those are all the rules for the meeting. Hopefully, we're all on the same page. And again, we will go by the agenda, and the agenda lists the committees, and that's how we handle business. So now, we will move on with the agenda that is presented to us. We do not have any announcements or presentations, so I'll go to the next committee, which is Economic Development Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Mayor Pro Tem Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business at this time under the Economic Development Committee.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. We have a lot going on in this committee. Finance Committee chaired by Councilmember Mark Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
Finance does have several items tonight.
Yes, sir.
The first three, I believe it is, will be Ms. Callen bringing us information on amendments to our budgets as we travel through the year. So I will read all three of those, if that's okay, Ms. Callen, and then just let you take the floor and go through each of them, okay?
Yes, sir.
So, Item A is to adopt an ordinance to amend the City of Douglasville's fiscal year 2022 and '23 general fund budget. That's Item 23-030. Then, another one, to adopt an ordinance to amend the City of Douglasville's fiscal year 2022-23 sanitation fund budget. That's Item 23-091. And Item C is adopt an ordinance to amend the City of Douglasville's fiscal year 2022-23 hotel motel fund budget, Item 23-105. Ms. Callen?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Karen Callen, Finance Director, City of Douglasville. Good evening.
Good evening.
So, the first budget amendment, this is our second quarter budget amendment, and this is for general fund that we'll start off with. One of our revenue adjustments that we'll be handling is a sales tax decrease of $325,000. This is due to the local option sales tax agreement. In developing this budget last year, we knew that there was a chance that this might happen, so we built in a contingency. So, we will offset that revenue loss with a contingency. Also, interest rates are rising. At the first of the calendar year, it was .06%. Right now, it's 3.92%. So, we're earning a lot more interest income, and so we could adjust the budget upward by $350,000. With the economy slowing down, building permits have really slowed down, so we will need to decrease that line item by $400,000. And property taxes, due to the change in the digests, we had a huge increase in the digests this past year. There's been a lot of appeals, and also, we had the tax allocation district that we had to fund, so we are decreasing property tax revenue by $300,000. So, that's a net decrease of $675,000, but we can use the offset to the contingency line. So, that still leaves us about $500,000 in our contingency. On the expenditure side, we are increasing the property side improvements for the aerial to the underground utility relocation from Rose Avenue to East Courthouse Square. That's increasing that by $262,000. Phase one of the Georgia Power lighting project on the north side will begin, and that is increasing that line item by $602,000. And then, we have a citywide landscaping phase one of $200,000. We have engineering increase of $100,000 for plane review fees and on-call services. We have various personnel lines that we are adjusting. That's just housekeeping at this time of year. West Pines is increasing their revenue and also increasing their expenses. That nets to zero. And we are also have a distribution of, from our non-departmental lines to our departmental lines, for the sickly buyback incentive, Christmas incentive, and the service awards, and all those net to zero. And you'll see the detail on the schedules behind the memo.
Okay.
Any questions on general fund?
Questions on the first one? Maybe we break these up, so it's not so difficult to remember a question. Any question or comment?
Yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Callen.
Thank you. The second budget amendment is the sanitation fund, and we are increasing income, interest income as well, for the sanitation fund by $80,000. We are also increasing landfill services on the expenditure side. Landfill costs have increased by 35%, so that's going to require a $125,000 budget adjustment upward. We are able to offset that by $80,000 of the interest income, and we've had a lot of vacancies in that department. So, we are saving about $80,000 in health insurance that we can use to offset. Any questions on the sanitation fund budget?
Anyone? Yes, Madam Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Callen. I'm just questioning the sanitation budget. Do we, is KDB included in this portion of the budget?
It's not in this budget amendment, but yes, ma'am, it is included in the budget.
Okay, but not in this amendment?
Correct. There have not been any changes to KDB on their budget from the initial adoption for this fiscal year.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Carry on, then, to the third item.
All right. And then, finally, the last item is the hotel motel tax fund budget. We did have a line item that we are increasing and decreasing due to a clerical error of $575,000, but there also is a clerical error on the memo that Mr. Chairman pointed out when we met early. I will have that corrected and updated on Monday. It's on the last line where it says contingency. It says $75,000. It should be $575,000, but that nets to zero. It's just going from one line to another. And we are increasing our interest income there by $17,000.
Okay. Questions, comments? Is there any reason why? Is it necessary for us to vote individually on these? Is there a possibility that we could place these three items on the consent agenda? These are amendments to the budget. Is there consensus to do that? Are we okay with that, Ms. Jordan?
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Callen. I appreciate that report. Always, always good information. Some good news and bad news, but we're keeping the course. All right, we'll go to Item D. Authorize the mayor to sign a proposal for geotechnical services, GMC, proposal number GP 23002G with Goodwin Mills Kaywood for the proposed public safety driving course. Mr. Marcus Thompson's going to lead us through that.
All right.
How are you, Mr. Thompson?
Pretty good. How about yourself?
I'm good, thanks. Good, good to see you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. All right, give me one second. Sorry. All right, Marcus Thompson, City Engineer, 6701 Church Street, Douglasville, Georgia, 30134. So, the proposable for you this evening will assist in discovering the type of material within the subsurface of the Bright Star Road property, such as rock or unsuitable soil. The report consists of a field exploration, which includes 50 bores to an average depth of 20 feet, laboratory testing, and reporting performed under the direction of a Georgia Registered Professional Engineer specializing in geotechnical engineering. GMC has stated that the work can begin within three to four weeks from authorization. The field exploration is anticipated to take 10 days, laboratory testing roughly three weeks, and reporting will be provided three weeks after the completion of the testing. Are there any additional questions, concerns you have?
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. I do have a question here. It says in the body of this, it gives us an idea of a cost. I just want to make sure that you don't have a lot of actual clearing, but although it does mention clearing, we being in an area that we are surrounded by residential area, I'm sure that they will be providing whatever necessary silt fence and erosion control practices that would need to be put into place.
Yes, sir.
So that we did not disturb any other while we're doing this work?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
That's a part of it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just didn't see it mentioned. Wanted to make sure. Anyone have any questions or comments? I'm assuming that this will then give us a basis for whether or not it is actually feasible to go forward, once we have this geotechnical information back as to what we have to work with.
That is right. Yes.
So, that would just be the next necessary step, not anything further than that?
That's correct.
Okay. No questions or comments? Is this something that we could place on the consent agenda? You all say I'm trying to get you out of here early Monday, being that we have a full day already. Thanks to Madam City Manager. Okay, thank you for that. We'll go on then to Item E. Authorize the mayor to sign the Change Order 1 with Reeves Young LLC for Jesse Davis Park Project to amend the project completion deadline. Mr. Thompson?
All right. So, the item before you this evening is pretty much a housekeeping item for the project. The notice to proceed issued to Reeves Young shows an incorrect start date for the project. The project was delayed due to permitting requirements. We were required to receive a notice of intent from Georgia EPD, so we were waiting on that. And with that said, Reeves Young and city staff wanted to record the official start date, which is November 8th, 2022, and an updated schedule to reflect that date correction. So, Reeves Young has documented that they will not hold the city liable for additional general conditions after the amended start date per my request.
Okay, so we would then have a completion date. What did that do to our, what was our previous completion date? Prior to, I mean, the change now is to April 11th. Is it, is it a, I don't know how many days we're adding. Just curious. You can tell us that on Monday?
Yeah, I wanted to see.
I'd just like to see how much time we've lost.
I'll follow back over with you on Monday.
Okay. No problem. Questions, comments? All right. Because I'd like that information, Mr. Thompson, I won't ask this to be placed on the consent agenda.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, that's all that we have tonight under Finance.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Mr. Thompson. We appreciate your information. We'll move on then to the next committee, which is Housing and Community Affairs Committee chaired by Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight under Housing and Community Affairs.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
We'll move on to Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee. Dr. Burdanley, do you mind taking that committee as the vice chair, please?
No, ma'am, I don't mind. And we do not have any business under Legislative and Intergovernmental tonight.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Personnel and Organization Committee chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight in Personnel and Organization.
Thank you, sir. We'll move back then to Councilmember Mark Adams with Planning and Development Committee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
Planning and Development has two items. First item is to consider a request for plat approval for the purpose of combining plus or minus 1.158 acres at 5861 and 5871 Fairburn Road, Land Lot 52, District 1, Section 5, Parcels 00520150012 and 00520150002. The application is by QuickTrip Corporation, care of Mr. Charlie Tarwater. Mr. Thompson?
Yes, sir. So, the civil drawings for the proposed QuickTrip development located on Highway 92 at the former Region's Bank location depicts that the site will span two different parcels. Before issuing the land disturbance permit, city staff requires the applicant to replat into one larger tract. The plat before you reflect the lot combination. City and county staff have reviewed the exemption plat application, along with the supporting documentation, and has determined that the proposed plat meets the requirements of the UDO and other regulations. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the exemption plat. And we do have Mr. Charlie Tarwater present tonight to answer any questions or concerns you guys may have.
Okay. Page seven of 19 in this packet shows both of the present structures that are there now. And I'm assuming then that all of us are aware, familiar with where this is, questions or comments that anyone would have concerning this request. Okay?
Makes sense.
Yes. And all that we're really doing with this item, Mr. Thompson, is combining the two parcels into one, so that they can then get a land disturbance permit to go to work with the demolition and redevelopment?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
Okay. I don't think it's necessary unless anyone has a specific question for Mr. Tarwater. We appreciate him being here. Okay. We'll take it up on Monday. Thank you. Thank you very much. Item B. Amend Ordinance Section 42-45 to add a paragraph to allow the fire department to approve deviations from the provisions of Section 42-45. Mr. Thompson, help us with that, please.
Yes, sir. The amendment reflects a section of our UDO that requires an eight-inch ductile, ductile iron pipe for private fire mains. Due to the current economic climate, there is a delay in the pipe material, which causes significant delay for many of the construction projects within the City of Douglasville. Currently, the Georgia State Fire Code does not specify a specific pipe material to use, and after further consideration, the Douglas County Fire Department has determined that the PVC piping is the appropriate substitute material. So, the amendment reflects that substitute.
So, our ordinance is strict enough that it gives a specific type of pipe here, being ductile iron, which is currently not necessarily readily available in the market?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
Does this pipe have any, does the Water and Sew Authority have to also approve this, or are they involved in this particular situation? Are we hurting ourselves with one department in order to try to help another? Just curious.
Marcus, can I add something to that?
Yes, sir.
So, the, what precipitated this was actually the county has adopted similar language after dealing with Brian Keel at WSA, and he did approve that particular, a specific type of PVC pipe, and allowed for Douglas County to be able to have the same type of language like we have presented here for the deviation.
So, this actually originated with WSA, then?
It was, it was, there was communication from, between the fire department and WSA to make sure that they were okay. This is not going to be something that's going to be used on public sidelines. It's only going to be used on private sidelines.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we're not hurting ourselves in one area, and we don't create another problem in trying to solve this one, which should be on a temporary basis, but it makes perfect sense.
Yes, Coach?
When I was looking at this agenda item earlier, it looks like what's being said is that the fire department can determine case by case if somebody asks to use a different pipe as opposed to what the ordinance says. So, I just was wondering why it wouldn't just, why would it have to be ruled on case by case? What would, what would determine them denying or approving?
We do have representation from the county fire department in the audience, so if you have specific questions, it might be best that they are able to address them if you would like for them to come forward.
We'll have him come forward, and he can answer that. Thanks for coming in, being with us tonight. Sir, if you give us your name and address for the record, we would love to hear from you.
Jay Williford, Fire Marshal, 12501 Veterans Memorial Highway, Douglasville, Georgia, 30134.
And can you, can you address the question that Coach Watts has asked?
Can you repeat the question?
Well, as I read over it, it looks like, you know, if somebody wants to use a different pipe because of the issues with getting the pipe that they need, or what is required, it looks like it says that the fire department would determine case by case whether or not to approve it. What would, what would be a reason not to approve if somebody needed to use a different pipe?
So, the reason that wording is in there, because this is a post-COVID problem. Naturally, the supply, supply for pipe didn't meet the demand, so it's a post-COVID problem. So, what we have decided, I talked with Brian with WSA, and the actual fire line that goes into the buildings will still be ductile iron, your dedicated sprinkler line. But what these jobs are doing is it's shutting down some jobs that are, that are needing to continue work. And so, what we had decided was they'll have to meet a hardship with us, and then, as the, as the pipe comes more available, readily available, we'll go back to using the ductile iron pipe. And instead of having to change the ordinance to permit the PVC and then change it back to use the ductile iron, and then if this problem forces, it comes up again, we'll have to come back and do it over and over again. We just wanted a leeway or the authority to change it if they meet the hardship.
I see. Thank you. That answers my question.
Any others? Madam Mayor?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you.
I'm putting on my WSA hat now. So, I thought it was a requirement for WSA to use ductile iron or ductile iron pipe, because PVC erodes over years, concrete, steel, all of that, and so, that was a requirement. So, we're leaning, we're releasing the requirement?
Not, not to WSA.
Okay.
Okay, you have, on the property line, WSA still requires ductile iron pipe.
Okay.
And them being a government agency, they can, they can, according to them, they can still get their hands on ductile iron pipe.
Yes.
And their facilities are a little, their applications are a little smaller than what a large warehouse would be, you know, 5,000 square, 5,000 feet of pipe at a time. And so, only on the fire line, not on the public side, only on the private lines will that be utilized.
So, the right of way would still have ductile iron required?
From the vault, from the vault back.
Okay.
Will be the PVC, C900. And it's argumentative, I talked with several engineers, and it was very argumentative of the quality of PVC C900 versus the ductile iron. So, you know, it is what it is on that. I don't know, I'm not sure about that.
Okay. Thank you.
Others? Yes, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Are you seeing the same problem in the risers and in the sprinkler systems as well?
We have, we have, they seem to be, the eight inches is really the problem, and typically, you have a riser on your smaller facilities of four inches or smaller. And initially, there was problems with that, but they had used stainless steel risers and things of that nature, and we let them use other materials and that. And we had the leeway to do that, but on the, on this specific ordinance here, it specified ductile iron, eight-inch ductile iron. Now, on the risers, they still can use the eight-inch ductile iron, but it's a lot smaller. They don't have to have, you know, 8,000 feet or so. They can get by with 2,000 or 3,000 feet.
And you're saying there are, but there already is an exception written into that part of the ordinance that allows you to?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Good. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Other questions, comments? Okay, seeing none. Is there any reason why we could not place this on the consent agenda for Monday, please? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Thank you, sir. We appreciate you coming in to help us.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Madam Mayor, that's all that we have tonight under that department.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, and from our fire department, Douglas County Fire Department. We appreciate you, Representative, we do have the acting chief. Would you like to say anything, Dr. Allen? You want to just, you want to say hello and greet us? Come on down.
I'm busy, natural.
Okay, you're busy. Okay, thank you so much. Thanks for coming in. Yes, sir. So, we'll move on then to Public Improvement and Beautification Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Nicole Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
We do have one item this evening, and that is Item Number 23-104, says to authorize the mayor to sign the Architectural and Engineering Professional Services Proposal for the Recycling Center with Goodwin Mills Kaywood. And we do have Mr. Greg Roberts to come talk to us and answer all of our questions.
No pressure.
No pressure, Mr. Greg.
In five minutes.
I'm sorry?
You have five minutes. I've been told.
Five hours? No way.
I was told.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Greg Roberts, Public Services Department for the City of Douglasville. Yes, I guess this is probably about the most official announcement we've had about this project, but we are looking at doing a recycling facility at our Cedar Mountain facility. And all the information is here. The bottom line is, our estimated cost on this is about 4.4 million. We do have a, about a $600,000 contingency, so we believe we can keep this well below the $5 million all in. A lot of the cost will be involved with upgrading the, the road that gets from our current facility over to the backside of that property. So, we'll have to put in, excuse me, a culvert facility to cross that creep between those two facilities. So, we already have several people looking at that, including WSA, for that to go in. So, that is a good portion of the property cost. Also, the way we currently use that property is to manage our maintenance and sanitation operations. So, this project will move that to another side of the property and sort of get it out of the way for the project. And we may have more to talk about between now and Monday, as you guys may realize, but I believe this will be a win. It will be for City of Douglasville citizens, but not only. We do not plan to turn anyone away. We might turn away some commercial contractor if we can't handle them, but we're way down the road from anything like that. So, we will have a little upstart process. I think, and Councilmember Nicole Miller asked what the timeline would be. In a perfect setting, we'll be up and running late 2024. running late, um, 2024. But, uh, we should be in full operation early 2025. And, um, I don't know, Ms. Hampton may have some comments on it, but, uh, we're excited about it. There's a lot of things that, um, I'm already working on with the different staff members and sort of brainstorming. So, uh, we're open to ideas. Uh, so if you have any questions?
Thank you very much. I feel like the timing is perfect since we're doing our field trip tomorrow to the Smyrna Recycling Center. And I know that we went over a lot of this already, but I was curious about the grant that we had applied for, the one that I guess we did not get. If it comes around, could we reapply for it and possibly get one of those funds and be able to reimburse our, um, our pro funds that will be paying for this?
Yes. And, and their response to us was that they would revisit us. Uh, I do believe GMC believes this. Uh, Chan Weeks checked into it. She believes this as well. Um, we, we believe they're a hundred percent interested in our project, but, um, I think they're wanting to see a little more activity going forward into it. So they don't want to commit to, because we had asked for either a million or 1.2 million. Um, and so it might be that they're wanting to see some dirt turning or a tree coming down. Uh, but they did tell us they would get back to us, um, uh, in the coming months. Now, that was in December. We've not heard from them yet, but I really did not expect to hear the, from them by now. Uh, but they told us in the coming months, they would reach back out to us. I, I really believe they're looking not only for this action, but probably a little more action to happen in the field before they'll commit that much money.
All right. And that's completely understandable. Thank you.
Got a question?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Roberts, um, is this, this operation with recycling should fit well into the, basically the scope of use of that property that we have there? What will that, what percentage of the property would you think would now be occupied and used once this is in? Will we still have room for other, for other things?
So as, as, as you probably know, the, it's kind of a rough terrain. Uh, that's probably how the city ended up with it 30 or 40 years ago. We ended up with it in some land swap, uh, that I, I don't know that anybody even remembers how. But, uh, um, but it is, uh, where our current facility sits, you know, it sits on a cut. Um, and so we had to do some fill to get that in there. And then from there it goes down into a creek and then it goes back up another rocky hill, which that's Douglas County to a T. Uh, but, um, there, uh, there could be other, uh, spaces added, but it would be, it would involve grading and cutting fill. Uh, but we'll pretty much have the flat spots in use.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Madam Mayor?
Just a minor contractual issue. You might want to double check with the architects. So they have their, um, uh, fee broken down by phase based on their, on their, um, uh, responsibilities from schematic, design, development, um, construction documents, construction administration, but they don't include the bidding as part of their, in their fee structure. You might want to make sure they didn't leave that out.
Okay.
Come back and ask for a change or something like that. Could, it could, it could be a mathematical error, it could just been clerical error. So I just want to be clear on that one.
Thank you.
Ms. Dickinson will make that note and we'll
Okay.
we'll cover that base.
Thank you. Yes, Madam Mayor?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair, um, and Mr. Roberts. So including the basic design and all the phases and the information in, uh, within this contract, are we going to have a visual, like a, a mobile something or model that we can see?
Yes, we, we will. Um,
Give us hope, you know, when you see something, you can kind of put your brain
Yes. And, and we actually do have something similar to that. And I will, I'm going with you guys tomorrow. Ms. Dickinson is not. She will, she will find that for me.
Yes, sir.
But it was not a part of this presentation, but it's just a general draft that GMC put together
Okay.
for us to look at because it's very similar to the layout that you're going to see.
Okay, good. Very good. I'm excited. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else down on that end? No? And to clarify, this is going to be a seven day a week um, operation, correct?
Uh, it probably will not be a seven day a week operation. I, I may have confused you with some other conversation that you and I had.
Something else then, okay.
Um, I, I am looking at a seven day operation, but we won't go into that here because I don't have the people to do it yet. But on that note, to the mayor and council and to anybody that's listening, and, and I know everybody cares, um, but our manpower is gradually escalating up. I don't want to speak it too soon, but also do want to speak it as, yes, we do want to speak it, but we don't want to throw a wrench in it. That's right. But, uh, we're now, we're now out of the phase of having to pull, or as we all say, rob Peter to pay Paul, we're not having to pull people so much. Um, and so we're able to cover, cover those driver positions. And I'm hoping that we're about a month away from having, we'll never have extra people, but to go into opening up another aspect of the operation that has almost been forgotten about since the pandemic started. And I won't even go into it. It's really not, it's not recycling, but it's going to impact the recycling center is what she was referring to. But I, I'll wait till I get those people in place before I talk about that.
Sorry to confuse you guys then.
No problem.
All right. Cleanup days.
If there are not any more questions, uh, you guys bring your thinking caps and we can think of lots of questions for you for Monday night. And if there's not anything else, uh, we'll take this up on Monday night. Thank you, Mr. Roberts. And that's all I'll have tonight, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. We appreciate that report. And, and Mr. Roberts, thank you so much. Always very informative and we're, we're excited about the recycling. Um, we'll move on then to the next committee, Public Relations Committee chaired by Councilmember Howard Estes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business this evening.
Thank you, sir. So we'll move on then to, uh, public safety and the vice chair. Let me see. Is it you, Councilman Watts?
Yes, ma'am.
Did you, do you mind taking this committee for me, please?
Yes, ma'am. We, uh, we have several, several letters of the alphabet tonight.
Yes, sir.
Item A is consider an application for open container day permit on Saturday, May 20th, 2023, from 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM at O'Neil Plaza for the Taste of Douglasville submitted by Emily Leitner, Cultural Arts Council of Douglasville, Douglas County. And Ms. Sterling will handle this.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good evening to you all.
Good evening.
Shay Sterling, Main Street Program, 6695 Church Street, Douglasville, Georgia, 30134. Attached to the item, you will find the permit application for entertainment district to be enacted Saturday, May 20th, 2023, from 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM on O'Neil Plaza for the Taste of Douglasville. The purpose of the entertainment district is for economic development and tourism. We hope to attract more visitors downtown, encourage longer visits, and attract more businesses. This is a part of the implement, implementation of our downtown master plan. Main Street Program will provide color coordinated wristbands to the downtown businesses that opt in to be a part of our entertainment district for this event. And, um, the overflow wristbands will then be provided, provided to CAC to ensure anyone at the event with open container wristbands do have, um, the adequate wristband. Um, the color of the wristband is communicated by Main Street Program to the Police Department Administration. And then we also have Cultural Arts Council Executive Director Emily Leitner in the auditorium to entertain any questions from Mayor and Council as well. Thank you.
So Ms. Sterling, the way it works, if somebody goes into one of our, uh, restaurants and buys something, they can walk around with it as long as they got the wristband. And the wristband, that's the rest, the place that they buy the alcoholic beverage is where they'll get the wristband, correct?
Yes, sir. As well as it has to be in a plastic cup when they go into the establishment. It cannot be any glass, um, out on the plaza.
So no, no open containers originate at someone's car. It originates, uh, at, at our, at our businesses. Um, any questions? Madam Mayor, do you have anything?
You always come, you know.
Well, I'm, I'm looking.
I'm just kidding. Yes, sir. Uh, thank you so much. Thank you, Ms. Sterling and Ms. Leitner. So 11 o'clock, it started at 11 o'clock. That's kind of early. Okay, 11 to 5. Is it, um, I guess it's whatever alcohol is served, right? So we're not going to say just fruity or wine or be, is, is everything?
Everything that the restaurants choose to serve.
Okay. And, um, have we extended our, to Hudson's Barbecue, it used to stop at Blue Rose, have we extended beyond for that area, for the entertainment area? Didn't we do that a few weeks ago? Or will it be in effect?
No, it, it's, it's our standard area. We have not approved any expansion at this point.
Were we thinking about that?
We discussed it when Ms., um, Jordan brought before you the possibility of expanding the district, but that wasn't voted on. It was just in discussion.
Oh.
Yes, ma'am.
So by May, well, then we're leaving Hudson's Barbecue out.
She's preparing that, but we just, we don't have the ordinance prepared as of yet to, um, meet with the Taste of Douglasville.
They don't sell alcohol? Oh, well, never mind. Well, see, it tells you how much I know. I've drank a sweet tea. Okay. Never mind about that. But so it's whatever is sold in our entertainment district.
Correct.
People can purchase from 11 to 5 and you have to have a wristband with a certain color that you'll tell the police department. And they can walk around with the container as long as it is a plastic cup, which is a designated color in the wristband.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you so much. Just making sure I understand. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Any other, uh, comments or questions from council? None?
All right. Uh, well, um, is this an item that we need to, uh, put on consent agenda or, okay. All right. Uh, we'll place this one on consent agenda. Thank you, Ms. Sterling. Um, item B, consider an application for an open container day permit on Friday, March 24th, 2023, from 6:00 to 9:00 PM at O'Neil Plaza. That's 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM at O'Neil Plaza for the Friday Night Fever Line Dancing Event. Ms. Hardaway, you take this one.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Emily Hardaway, Community Outreach Coordinator, 6695 Church Street. This is an application for an entertainment district for an event we have coming up on O'Neil Plaza called Friday Night Fever Soul Line Dancing. Um, we'll have the Sunflowers in Motion Line Dancing Group, uh, that actually teaches line dancing over at our Parks Department, out leading, uh, the crowd and just kind of like teaching people, just having a fun Friday night. Um, and we want to enact an entertainment district to encourage people to eat at our downtown restaurants and then come out onto the plaza and just have a fun evening. Um, the process will be the same as Ms. Sterling just said for Taste of Douglasville. She'll take the wristbands to the restaurants that afternoon and leftovers. Um, and we've already talked to the police and we should be good to go. So I can answer any questions you have.
Um, I'm going to start off with the first question to Chief. Chief, uh, any, any violations of the wristband? How, just out of curiosity, how's that handled?
We just have to, uh, speak with these people, let them know what the, what our, uh, laws are and advise them that they got to, uh, you know, they got to maintain what our ordinances are. They validate them, then we'll just have to take action.
They'd have to either, what, pour it out or?
Yes. They would have to take, you know, they can't come out with some other different color cup or they have another wristband. I haven't signed anything for any of these two, uh, these, uh, two, uh, uh, programs are sent because I want an officer there. You know, so I hadn't, nothing had come across my desk for me to sign to make sure we have officers there to see it and be on location. So then that way, that's how we, you know, make sure we have somebody there that, that knows the, uh, ordinances and, and they can direct the people and, you know, give them a opportunity to correct themselves. If they don't, then we'll do what we need to do.
Okay. All right. Any, uh, yes, uh, Ms., uh, Councilman Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Probably just a typo or just a, a difference of, of, uh, event times. I see in one area it says six to nine. I see in the description it says seven to nine, or actually six to nine. Is that correct?
Yes. So the event itself is from seven to nine, but we wanted to enact the district starting at six, just in case people do go eat at one of, like Red Velvet, for example, um, and they get done at like 6:30, want to come out onto the plaza or, and bring, you know, bring a to-go drink. Um, so that's just the reason why that's a different time.
Good. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Yes, uh, Mr. Estes? Uh, it's, it's not actually about the, the application. I, I was just going to ask if you were going to be joining in the line dancing.
Are you looking at me or Chief?
You.
You're looking at me? Yeah, I, I can, I can, uh, probably
You sound like Robert De Niro.
Wear out a little shoe leather on there.
I know you're not talking to me. Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Chief, thank you, Mr. Chair. So the chief brings a question to mind. City manager, are we going to funnel the information to Chief Sparks', uh, department so they'll know the dates?
We do it after council approves because if you all don't approve, then he doesn't need to.
Boom. Okay. Thank you.
And just one last question from, uh, for you. Uh, do we have, um, live music or is it DJ?
Um, I'm working with Sunflowers in Motion to determine what their needs are. Um, so I haven't, she hasn't told me yet if it's going to be a DJ or if we're going to put up our speakers and play, um, like a playlist or something like that. So that's to be determined.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Any, anything else? Thank you, Ms. Hardaway.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Uh, oh, and we'll put that on the consent agenda also for Monday, if that's okay with council?
Yes, sir.
Item C, con- consider, uh, the application for the alcoholic beverage license for the retail package sale of wine and malt beverages at the following establishment. Proposed licensee, Family Dollar Stores of Georgia LLC, DBA Family Dollar, number 20350. Location, 6113 Fairburn Road. Proposed agent outlet manager Pamela Johnson Long. And the required fees have been paid into the finance department. Uh, Ms. Johnson Long, if you would, uh, please give us your name and address for the record and then go ahead and speak your piece.
Hi, my name is Pamela Johnson Long. My address is 7483 Woodbine Place, Riverdale, Georgia.
Okay. Do you, um, is this a, a, uh, renewal of?
No, it's a new application.
New application?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Cause I knew, I knew that there was some Family Dollar stores that have
I got seventeen, yes.
Okay.
In different areas.
All right. Uh, any, uh, questions or comments from council tonight? Yes, Madam Mayor?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair. Didn't we have an application for Family Dollar? Is it not this store?
It's not this one.
It was the one on Veterans Memorial.
Mm-hmm. That's my story.
Okay. So, uh, police department, have we had any concerns with them? Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
I'm, I'm going to assume, uh, well, I'm not going to assume. I'm going to ask, uh, y'all do training of the employees, uh, ID, uh, requirements and things. What, what type of program?
As soon as they're hired. They have I-Learn classes that they have to have, have to do before they get on the register.
Okay.
As soon as they're hired. And they'll reoccur every three months.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other, uh, questions from council? And we, we won't be putting this one on the consent agenda. We'll take, if there's no other questions or comments, we'll take this up on Monday. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Johnson Long, appreciate it. Item D, appoint John McGuire to the Douglas County Douglasville Animal Advisory Board for a two-year term expiring March 6th, 2025. Chelsea Jackson will handle this.
Thank you, Councilman Watts. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Chelsea Jackson, 6695 Church Street. Ms. Joan, uh, McGuire, she did inquire about being on the animal advisory board. Councilman Davis interviewed her last week, um, as well as another individual from the current animal advisory board interviewed her. Um, and this is their recommendation. This is also a recommendation from Councilman Estes as well. Uh, Ms. McGuire, she interviewed very well. She's a retiree. She said she has all the time in the world to, um, dedicate to the animal advisory board and no other individuals, um, are interested in this board at this time.
We certainly, uh, as a council, we love it when the citizens get involved like this and, and serve on these boards. And we appreciate Ms. McGuire. I looked at her, um, her resume and of course she's got a great resume there and we just, uh, appreciate her willing to serve. Do we have any questions or comments from council? Mayor Pro Tem, I see you nodding down there.
I, 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 myself and, and Councilman Estes will happily vouch for Ms. McGuire's character. Um, she, my wife managed to talk her into volunteering at the cat house recently. Anybody who's willing to serve at the cat house, anybody knows what that is, I think there are about 80 cats. If you're willing to change the litter and, and, and clean the cages and do everything you have to do that, you're, you definitely can serve on the animal control boards. Joan's a great person and, uh, it's good, good to see her, uh, on this, on this board.
Yes, Councilman Estes?
Um, just to follow up on what Terry said. I mean, I, I've known Joan 16 years. Uh, we actually met in the dog park with our dogs. Um, you're not going to find a stronger advocate for animal welfare anywhere.
Oh, wow.
Um, she is, uh, she was one of the founders of the, of the women's group at Tributary that
Oh, good.
that traps and, and neuters feral cats and, and rehums them. Uh, I mean, this is surely her passion. So we could not have a better I mean, this is surely her passion, so we could not have a better candidate.
Well, that's exciting.
Thank you for that, Councilman Estes and Councilman Miller. Any other questions or comments? All right. Well, what we'll do is we'll just place this on consent agenda for Monday, if that's okay with council. And thank you again, Ms. McGuire, for your service. Madam, we have no other items tonight under public safety.
Thank you so much, Mr. Vice Chair. We appreciate you taking that committee and Ms. Jackson and staff. We appreciate you so much. We'll move on then to the next committee, and this is also your committee, Recreation, Culture and Tourism chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have, let me scroll down here, one item tonight. Consider a project application entitled Love Where You Live. We mentioned this one earlier. Submitted by the Cultural Arts Council, Inc. for public art to be exhibited at Mill Village Park, eighty-three twenty Grady Street, number two Werthen Memorial Park at Parker Street, number three Douglasville Police Department at twenty-eighty-three Fairburn Road. And Ms. Sterling is back to present this one.
Hello again, Mayor and Council. Shay Sterling, Main Street Program, six-six-nine-five Church Street, Douglasville, Georgia, three-zero-one-three-four. Attached to the item, you will find a city property request letter and city property location requests submitted by the Cultural Arts Council for the second installation of public art project entitled Love Where You Live. Public art benefits the community through placemaking, bringing people together and can be used as a tool in economic development. This is a part of the implementation of our downtown Douglasville Public Art Master Plan. We also have Cultural Arts Council Director Emily Leitner in auditorium to entertain any questions from Mayor and Council. Thank you.
As we, as we mentioned earlier, this program has been great. I've had lots of comments from folks about our artwork on the hearts. And I'm assuming that these five locations listed in the letter and the agenda item, these are all new locations, correct?
These are new locations and that should read at three locations and not five.
Okay, because it also mentioned that West Pines and the amphitheater, so the.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Any questions or comments from anybody? Yes, Madam Mayor?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Sterling and Ms. Leitner. I'm excited about this. I know the hearts are going up. Are you continuing to do the? Oh, Lord. I'm looking at them. The fire with the, you know, I'm talking about.
The fire hydrants.
Boom. Shaka-laka.
Arts on fire.
The fire hydrants. Yes, ma'am.
We have paused on the hydrants right now. We've been able to successfully complete a loop in downtown Douglasville, going from the Cultural Arts Center through Church Street down to Hudson's, back past the library and the high school. We're looking at possibly doing that in the future, but not at this moment.
Okay. Yeah, those were nice as well as the hearts. And you are going to continue to have the artwork, the public artwork that is up at our parks? Are you going to have more artwork?
The Fence Gallery?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, in partnership with Visit, Discover Douglasville, the Welcome Center and the Cultural Arts Center were continuing that as well. We had paused for a moment and our community was very vocal and said, we love this when we take our walks. Please keep it coming. So we are.
Yes, and we have some renovations coming to Fowler Field, so we look forward to, with Mr. Bass, our Parks Director, having some of the artwork out there. And for Werthen Park, you're going to replace the mayor's butterfly mosquito.
That one's already gone.
What'd you say?
The butterfly, I believe, is no longer there.
Oh, do we take it up? I'd, that just. Are you going to put another butterfly?
We can definitely talk about that.
What happened to the butterfly? I mean.
I am not sure. I believe Chan Weeks would be the one to ask questions about that.
It's in my, it's in my front yard. Just, just kidding, just kidding.
You do? You don't have a mosquito butterfly in your yard. Okay. Thank you so much.
My pleasure.
Any other questions or comments? Yes.
I know that West Pines and the amphitheater was mentioned. Is that something that we could possibly see in the next round of this project?
We are not currently sure if we're going to do a round three. However, we could order extra hearts with this round if it is something that is still actively sought out by the community and the city and the county. We can definitely look at doing a round three.
I would definitely be interested in having that option to see those in the other locations. And someone else is over here saying something about Freedom Island as well. I think people really like it and gravitate to it.
And we can add those now to the list or later, whatever Mayor and City Council would like to do with that.
Just out of curiosity, what's the cost to do a location?
Each location is a thousand dollars, which includes the heart, the artist fee, the installation fee, the concrete slab and the signage that goes with it as well.
And the ones that have been out, they've held up pretty well? They haven't had any issues?
We've only had issues from one location over at Fowler Field where someone drove off the parking lot into the grass and hit it. But other than that, they have held up wonderfully.
Okay. Well, like I said, they're, they seem popular. I would love to know what other citizens thought about it. If, so I would love to see a round three. But anyway, anybody else want to come in, weigh in? Mr. Estes, go ahead.
When would you need to know to add on to this order?
We are looking at purchasing the hearts, placing that order within, by the end of the month.
Okay. Thanks.
And to clarify about Fowler Field, the heart is still intact. We didn't have a broken heart, so.
So it's still, it's still there?
Yes.
Okay. The driver of the car, he's not still there, though?
Not sure of his status.
Anyway, anybody else? All right. Thank you for your presentation, ladies, and we will place this on the consent agenda for Monday. Thank you very much for all y'all do.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, that's all I had tonight under Recreation, Culture and Tourism.
Thank you so much, Coach. We appreciate this, your report, as well as Ms. Leitner and Ms. Sterling. Thank you so much. We'll move on then to item fifteen, which is Technology Committee. That's chaired by Mayor Pro Tem, City Councilmember Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business under the Technology Committee at this time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Transportation Committee chaired by Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight under Transportation.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Do we have any other business to come before council tonight from the elected officials? Everyone's quiet. Okay, well, I have about five things I'm doing real fast. City Manager, we were talking about artwork and so if we can try to prepare, someone asked me about it to the update for the mural, the mural installations at the town green.
Ms. Jackson has that. I think the Arts Commission is working on an update, so I'll have one for you all. Councilman Estes is your council rep for that.
Yes, very good. Let me see. I was at Buell Elementary School. I spoke for their Black History Month program. Someone talked to me about Airbnbs in the city of Douglasville and I know Ms. Callan was here doing finance. I'm not certain how that, whatever's going on with that, so if we can kind of maybe bring it to the table for our budget hearings. Is there some legislation or something?
From which, from which aspect?
Airbnbs for the city and how we collect the tax and if we have a moratorium on them or do we have a percentage or how all of that?
They, they do pay a tax. Ms. Callan, she may have the information, but we do collect hotel motel taxes from Airbnb's.
Do we have a number? Do we know how many are in the city limits?
Ms. Jackson has it and I can email that out to you. We don't have the number as of yet, but we do keep, counter that through our Tourism Department.
Okay. I think that was it. There was something. Oh, I went to the Day at the Capitol with Chamber of Commerce and City Manager talked to me about House Bill five-seventeen, which was, deals with building standards. And so I did speak offline with Representative Roger Bruce, Kimberly Alexander, a representative new. And so they know that that's a GMA initiative and we would like the cities to keep, you know, the criteria and have the opportunity to control the building standards for development in the city. And also we talked about state bills, three-seventy-seven, I think it stalled, which would, is critical race theory and teaching all of that in the school system. So that was kind of, talked about that and then there were some other issues. But those were kind of the main hot topics, I guess.
You mentioned the buildings. Is that the same bill that keeps coming up every year about trying to take, take the power away from cities to locate, to regulate locally?
And can I interject?
Yes, sir, please.
Because it has come up before. They keep dropping it, but it always worries me. And it's going to come back. I mean, there's some powerful forces behind that bill that have a lot of money.
It's a zombie bill.
And it's one person maybe ends up blocking it, but we need to get, next time that comes around, we need to get the citizens involved and ring some phones because they are trying to take away our ability as a council and as the citizens of this city, the right to develop the city the way they want to and make it cookie cutter across the state is just, it's crazy what they're trying to do.
Yes, sir. And the other one I brought up, I apologize, was American Homes for Rent. We talked about ownership and the percentage. I know AJC had an article. It was that you can only do ten percent of subdivision or something for rental property so that developers don't come in and buy the whole subdivision up and then rent all of those homes out. So those are just some of the things that are germane to the city. There were other development, economic development, teachers, other issues, but those were city, some of the city concerns. So that's all I had. Chief, I was going to ask you if you could prepare for yourself and the delegation or the command staff to come in and receive, to be presented with the Chief of the Year from GBI and Department of the Year. So whenever you have a chance to, to do that, we'd love to have you come in so the citizens can see you. Because we're proud of you. All right. That's all under other business. If we don't have anything else, I'll move on. Updates from city staff or city attorney is, our assistant city attorney, since our city attorney is on the mend, Ms. Miranda Jordan.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. I did want to make an announcement regarding GMA. They have a Friday Focus phone Zoom call at nine A. M. tomorrow morning. And I can send out that information to the City Manager to forward to you all. But that goes over a lot of the legislation topics that have been discussed over the past week. Mr. Ruchi Patel and the other legislative staff are presenting on that call and it's about forty-five minutes to an hour. It's really informative. Other than that, I don't have any business this evening.
Thank you so much. Please send that link to us and we can listen from nine until ten before we leave to go to the recycling tour. Thank you so much, Ms. Miranda. My chief of police, Chief Sparks?
Yes, ma'am. We have a youth peace rally, March eighteenth.
March eighteenth.
From one to three at the Police Department. So asking the youth to come out and we're going to talk, have some Q. And A.s and just talk about what we can do and help keep them safe and keep our city safe and spread some peace.
Very good. Thank you, Chief. We appreciate that. And you had a wonderful program for Unity Day down at the Police Department, Youth Against Violence. That was great, the great program. I will not be here on the eighteenth. I'm going to be out of town, but I'll be sending good thoughts and praying for you all. Thank you. Our City Manager, Ms. Marcia Hampton?
Just a reminder about Monday and Tuesday. You all should have emails regarding the exact date and time and location of where you should be. And you all should have, as members of GMA, you all should receive all of those communications, including updates. And they come in legislative updates. So when you all need to know which bills, you all should have those in your email. If you want breakfast, we won't officially start presentations until nine-thirty, but we will have something for you.
Bacon is at eight-thirty?
Yeah. I, I didn't want to say that on camera, but between eight-thirty and nine-thirty, nourishment.
Doing too much. Okay. Before we have comments from citizens and delegates, our acting fire chief, Dr. Allen, Miles Allen, came back in. And since you've made the trek to come back, would you like to address us, please, and talk to us and give us any updates or anything you want to say to myself and council members? We appreciate your time this evening.
Good evening. My name is Miles Allen. I, Douglas County Fire Department, twelve-five-zero-one Veterans Memorial. The Fire Department is, is strong. We're, we're protecting the citizens, not just Douglasville, but Douglas County. We're ready and available at, at the moment's call. Today we had a, had a very prosperous and effective meeting between myself and Chief Sparks. And we're here for you. So thank you for allowing me to speak. I appreciate you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Allen. No, just make sure you keep my son safe. Kick him in the shins if he start messing up. Thank you, Dr. Allen. Anyone else? Okay, now we, it's comments from citizens and delegates. If you sustain the meeting, you'd like to address us, please come forward. Give us your name and address for the record and you have five minutes to talk to us about any business germane to the city of Douglasville.
My name is Cindy Welch. I live at three-oh-oh-two Concord Way.
Yes, ma'am.
Several months ago, I came in and talked about the part of Timber Ridge that's in the city that needs restriping. Well, last Friday, there's a car coming up, getting in the lane to make the left turn on Chapel Hill. He had a red light, so, you know, he was going slow and stopped. A car came off of Chapel Hill, made a left turn right into his lane because he couldn't see and he didn't know, I guess, that there's only one lane when you come off of Chapel Hill onto Timber Ridge. And there's two next to that that are left turn onto Chapel Hill. He came right into it. And then he's honking at the guy that's in the lane that he's supposed to be in. And I thought the two of them were going to get out and have a fight. But in their defense, it is, it needs to be restriped very badly. I mean, do I need to get paint and go out there? I mean, I, I just don't think it would take that long if somebody would just get out and do it. And it would, may save a life or a fight.
Yes, ma'am.
Question, Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Is that intersection, I know, I know the traffic signals are, are the striping and the dividers in the roads and so forth, is that a part of the DOT? State of Georgia handles that or, or does the city handle that? Just curious. I don't know.
I thought it was, and if it was city and county street, I thought it converted to county. That's my understanding, but Mr. Roberts?
Well, there wasn't an accident. They stopped. There was no accident. He stopped and the other person stayed back when he saw him coming at him.
My question is, is that our, is that the city's responsibility or is that the responsibility of the Department of Transportation? I, I just don't know.
If it's county, I'll go to the county tomorrow and get it done because it's crazy.
I think we'll do an investigation.
Couple months ago, no one even suggested it could be county.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Welch, I'll have, will have follow up with you, but from my understanding, generally speaking, if it's a city and county road, which Timber Ridge is partly city and county, that it converts to county. Okay, we'll, is that true, Ms.? Okay. Okay.
I'll give you my phone number and you can call me tomorrow. Oh, yeah, I have yours.
Thank you.
I don't want it to take months again.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Any other comments from citizens and delegates? Yes, ma'am, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record. And there should have been a formed speaker form to fill out.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Madam Mayor, council members?
Yes, ma'am.
I hope I'm at the right form. I am a senior citizen.
I apologize. Your name and address for the record.
I'm sorry. My name is Carla Carey. I live at five-two-three-two Presley Crossing Lane, Douglasville, three-oh-one-three-five.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm a senior citizen and I receive reduced rate for garbage collection. This is my whole issue. I had a recyclable container that was free and I have a regular garbage container. On Monday, on Monday, twenty-seventh of February, my recyclable container went missing. I contacted Douglasville Trash Collection Agency and I was told that my container slipped into the garbage. and I was told that my container slipped into the garbage truck by accident. I asked for it back, and I was told I could not get it back, and I would not, and it would not be replaced, as Douglasville no longer was doing recycling. This was news to me. However, the recycling containers were remaining used by the residents who have them. My only option would be to relinquish my senior discount, pay full price for a garbage container, and then pay an added fee for additional container. All Douglasville residents have a free recyclable container. Why am I being singled out for the mistake made by the garbage collectors? I realize you have much bigger problems to contend with than my recyclable container issue. Nevertheless, it is important to me. I have spoken to a Ms. Krista Smith at the Public Service Office of Douglasville, and I received a party line that the recyclable container would not be replaced. My only option would be to pay more money. I told her that option was not acceptable, a not acceptable solution for me, and asked to speak to her supervisor. I received a call today from a Melissa, that's the only name she gave me, of the Public Service Office. Melissa stated verbatim the response I was given by Garbage Collection Agency and Ms. Smith. These government, government agencies, their lack of responsiveness and unwillingness to address my issue, to me, is unacceptable.